Good evening and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Special Board Meeting Study Session. Today is March 4th, 2022. It is now 4:43 PM. May I have a... I'm going to call this session to order. And Michelle, would you like to lead us in the fly slide?
Oh, sure. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To remember what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have approval of the agenda.
So move.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, so she passes 4-0 with a preferential vote from Eli Raymer.
I 5-0.
A 5-0, thank you. Okay, Dr. Breggy, any reports from closed session?
There was no action in closed session, President Wells.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we have the agenda hearing period of comments. The first person that we'll hear from is Donna Trifman. Her time has been seated by Michelle Nizar. And Donna, you have six minutes. Are you there?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Dear Board of Education, members of the Cabinet, and all district volunteers, this comment refers to item 8A on the agenda, the presentation by the CCAC Committee. First, the CCAC Board Subcommittee, as it's described in the 2018 Facilities Manual, was suggested via presentation by Don Blake in May of 2018. Thereafter, there was supposed to be a period of application culminating with board appointments by August 2018. The members were thereafter chosen by Don Blake, not by the Board of Education in a public meeting. The committee was to have approximately five to six members, but it only has three. The purpose of the CCAC Committee was to help the Board of Education provide accountability to the Beverly Hills community while minimizing risk in advising the Board with respect to implementation of designated construction projects. The CCAC was to meet regularly and act as a sounding board for the issues brought by the Facilities Committee and the Construction Manager. Importantly, the CCAC was required to provide reports not less than quarterly, meaning at least four times a year at a regular board meeting. Thus, it is surprising that this is the first time we hear from the CCAC Committee. Trust starts with truth and it ends with truth. So what is the truth here? In Don Blake's October 21, 2021 presentation, he reported that the program is at a shortfall of $129 million. But in the CCAC Committee report today, the number has magically dropped from $129 million to $69 million shortfall. Both conclusions are speculative as the GMPs have not yet been determined. So what do we actually know? We know we don't have enough money to finish, and it's that simple. According to Mr. Goldstein from his application to the Board a few months ago, he understands that the Board is metaphorically standing on a rooftop providing oversight to the district, and that is what this Board must do. It is encouraging that the Board is looking at this construction program from the critical eye of oversight, because at the end of the day, the Board is a fiduciary to the community, and this is the third time some community members are coming forward and saying, "Oh, oh, we don't have enough money to finish." It's time to get solutions and plans that encourage spending within our means, not encouraging more expenditure via a committee wholly controlled by the vendor standing to benefit. Why hasn't the CCAC provided an alternative plan if the district does not procure the additional funding? Don Blake has not been back to present an alternative to the Board since his master plan presentation on October 21, 2021, identifying a serious shortfall. This is not good planning. Of course, modern facilities attract families. It's the same pitch that was made in November 2018 by Mr. Margot and Mr. Goldstein during their presentation regarding Measure BH. They said that Measure BH would complement Measure E, and everything would be covered by both, and we'd be done with everything way before we will be. Of course, there is escalation. The escalation was included in the original pitches as well. Effective Boards understand and respect their community's diverse range of opinions. The CCAC is comprised of three people in this community only. Members were not elected by the community nor appointed by the Board. They were chosen by Don Blake. When Mrs. Marcus stated she wanted to implement a facilities construction committee that would operate in public with meetings and agendas and minutes, Don Blake stated that he would take it under advisement. Quote, "In the CSAC, in the CSAC, while sitting on the CBOC as well, Mr. Runn served on both concurrently. Another member serves on the CCAC and the FCC as its chair. How can a member provide oversight of the construction program yet serve on another committee appointed by the Construction Manager? CCAC meetings are not public. These meetings have no agenda, and these meetings have not had any minutes. We simply just don't know what is going on there. What the CCAC presents tonight is doom and gloom when what should be presented is an alternative to spending more money. We have money left in the measures. Let's start spending within our means and figure out the planning for what we can actually do. Regaining community trust is the crucial starting point for real and sustained improvement. Trust is built on honest consistency and must start with the truth and end with the truth. It's time for the truth. The buck stops here. Thank you for your consideration, everyone. Have a pleasant weekend. Take care."
Thank you, Donna. The next person that we'll hear from is Diana Sepraidi.
She may not be there.
Yeah. Okay, next we'll hear from Edward Montoya, and you have three minutes, Edward.
No.
And next is Sagali Sabag. Marjonne, are you there? President Wells, there is one person in the waiting room who did not enter the room under the name that we recognize, so we're unable to allow them into the meeting. It just says I thought. Marjonne, are you here?
Do you want to go to the next person?
She's the last.
Oh. Some people could have been for the meeting on Tuesday.
Okay. Well, unless Marjonne pops up in the next minute. I'm going to move on to our next agenda item. It looks like she's trying, though. Okay, Marjonne, you're there. We're sorry. We're going to move on. We're going to go to the Agenda Item 8, Study Session 8A, which is the Citizens Construction Advisory Committee Report.
Good evening. We'd like to take this opportunity to introduce the CCAC team, Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Fenton, and Mr. Runn. And I know that we're limited on time. I did share with the Board some biographical information, so we have an opportunity to read through that information. And I will turn this right over to Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Good afternoon, President. They must let me in. You have to do it on your own.
No.
Hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Good afternoon, President Wells, Vice President Margot, and Board of Education. On behalf of the CCAC, thank you in advance for your time, consideration, and attention. Rebecca, do you have the presentation there?
I sure do.
We can put it up for the Board and the Community. Alrighty, if you can go to the slide that shows, the next slide, please. And the next slide. Great, thank you. Before Los Angeles was known for producing movies, it was known for producing oil. LA used to be a small town until the late 1800s, when in 1892, Edward Dohini, for whom Dohini Drive is named, discovered oil wells near present-day Dodger Stadium. By 1914, California produced nearly 40% of the nation's supply of crude oil. The LA basin generated nearly 25% of the world's oil production. Beverly Hills High School was built in 1927 by the Los Angeles High School District. A decade later, the residents of Beverly Hills would vote to form the Beverly Hills Unified School District. Next slide. In this photo from 1928, BHHS can be seen in the center-left with an active oil field abutting the campus. Most oil fields in Beverly Hills turned out to be a bust, so the owner Burton Green, an oil baron for whom Burton Way is named, decided to venture into real estate. He named the newly-planned community after its hometown, Beverly Farms, Massachusetts. Next slide. In 1927, BHHS opened. This is an aerial photograph of the high school property taken March 1928. The entire campus sits directly on top of the western end of the Beverly Hills Oil Field. Next slide. In 1959, Beverly Hills Board of Education entered into an agreement to lease a portion of the southwest campus of BHHS for oil and gas extraction. Under the lease, BHUSD received a 5% royalty share of oil and gas production. In 1978, the Beverly Hills Board of Education added the City of Beverly Hills to the oil lease agreement. And for the next 44 decades, the district shared royalties with the City of Beverly Hills. In 1996, Venico LLC became the operator of the oil and gas-producing wells located on the site of the district's only high school. Venico acquired the rights by transfer from a predecessor entity. Next slide. And next slide, thank you. In 2011, the Beverly Hills City Council voted to ban oil drilling within the city limits. The ban went into effect December 31, 2016, bringing to an end decades of oil, gas production on the city's portion of the Beverly Hills Oil Field. The decision to cease oil extraction meant a loss of millions of dollars in future royalties for the school district. The CCAC highlights the district's history of oil extraction to emphasize to this Board and community that a decision made nearly a century ago by the Los Angeles High School District, the original owners of the property, to build Beverly Hills High School on an active oil field and subsequent decisions made by prior school boards in 1959, 1978, and 1996 to continue to lease high school property for oil and gas extraction continues to plague the BHUSD to this day. Next slide. Just last month, the City of Los Angeles also banned oil and gas extraction. So what's the hard part? The hard part is figuring out who would pay for the well remediation. Next slide. In 2016, Venico filed for bankruptcy. In 2017, a bankruptcy judge ruled Venico pursuant to federal bankruptcy law had no obligation to remediate the BHHS site. The question of who would pay for the remediation of the wells was answered, not Venico. Next slide. The cost to remediate all the oil and gas wells on the high school property will total $93 million. Most legacy and gas wells in California were discarded in the early 1900s when state and local oversight was non-existent. Virtually no records exist regarding the drilling and abandonment of these wells. BHUSD has identified three additional legacy wells that still require remediation before the state will allow the district to commence high school south campus athletic field improvements. The cost to abandon the three remaining legacy wells are estimated at $21 million. Despite the City of Beverly Hills receiving oil and gas royalties for nearly four decades, the City of Beverly Hills has only contributed $11 million toward well remediation. Due to BHUSD's lawsuit against MTA, Metro was obligated to pay $22 million for the Wolfkill 23 and Rodeo 107 legacy oil well remediation. BHUSD has spent $39 million to remediate the Venico site. The remaining three legacy wells will cost the district an additional $21 million, unless some other government entity, either federal, state, or local, steps into offset those remediation costs. BHUSD will have paid a total of $60 million out of its construction bond for oil well remediation on its high school property. I do thank you for your time and attention to this section. Mr. Runn will now discuss the CCAC's role in oversight of the district's construction program. Next slide. Mr. Runn?
All right, good evening. And thank you for this opportunity to present. I know there's a lot of information that's that people look at, and I just want to share what the CCAC has looked at over a period of time. You know, I became interested in this construction program when my daughter started the seventh grade, which was about nine years ago. That's when we came into the Beverly Hills Unified School District. And honestly, I was kind of horrified at what the facilities in Beverly Hills looked like. They didn't look much different than when I graduated from Elradao School in 1978. My daughter came into the school from an independent school. I came in from, into the Beverly Hills Schools from a school in Overland Park, Kansas. And honestly, both were much nicer than Elradao. So I think I didn't really know how to get involved, so I applied and was selected to be on the CBOC. And I started to gather a lot of information. And what I became was a critic of the program. I was a critic of what the district was building, the district's management of the program. And I was trying to see if there was anything I could do to help advance this program for the district. The CBOC is your only required committee by law of all the committees, of all your board committees. That is your only required committee, but its function is somewhat limited by virtue of the education code. Meanwhile, I was, you know, amassing a fair amount of data. I rewrote the performance audit scope and took the deeper dive, which I was able to do in conjunction with the CCAC. One of the initial data sets that the CCAC reviews are the annual Measure E and BH performance and financial audits to evaluate the effectiveness and efficiency of internal controls to provide Dr. Breggy and those charged with district construction governance, such as your bond manager, your construction manager, and your CBO, with recommendations to improve the program's performance and operations. These are not part of the CBOC duties. These are different duties. When the CBO, when the CCAC was first convened, it reviewed the Measure E performance audit for the period of July 2016 through June 2017 to determine a baseline for the program's performance and noted 15 significant internal control deficiencies relating, related to the lack of specific compliance with bond program requirements, the effectiveness, and again, the efficiency of the operations in areas such as expenditure controls, program management, budgetary management and change orders, procurement controls, and claim avoidance. In 2017, the district contracted with TCDS to serve as the bond manager. And about a year later, Pro West came on as the construction program manager. The CCAC made implementation recommendations related to our observations identified in the audits of Measures E and BH. As a result of the most recent audits, in fact, the performance of the program has improved. The BHUSD and the management teams have developed and implemented policies and procedures, which we did not have previously. So we actually now have a construction policy manual as a district. We, we have experienced professionals in Pro West and TCDS who have worked on these types of programs. The district has, to the extent available, utilized other revenue sources to maximize the impact on our bond program, on our bond funds, such as the use of developer fees. And the district owns software to actually map a construction management program, software to manage the programs. Finally, to strengthen our internal controls, the district contracts with Keystone Solutions to support the reconciliation of expenditures. If we can go to the next slide, please. One of the recommendations of the CCAC was the closeout or forensic audit of the completion of buildings B1 and B2 on the high school campus. The significance of this audit is that it fully assesses the first project that TCDS and Pro West collaborated on. The Board approved the audit firm of Moss Adams to perform the closeout validation for B1 and B2. The primary focus of the closeout validation was to confirm the services as outlined based on the construction, based on the construction contract. So in fact, they reconciled the final contract to the final project, confirmed that management action plans determine the district at closeout con, that the, excuse me, that the closeout was implemented consistent with the internal controls and analyzed the final cost in connection with the construction. This is the first time that I'm aware that the BHUSD undertook this type of evaluation, which I believe was beneficial for the district's management. We, in connection with the final closeout audit, in fact, again, several good practices were identified by the auditors. We have stronger program expenditure documentation, strong collaboration amongst the district and the managers, program managers. And in fact, at one time, there was limited interaction even between the construction program and the business office in this district. So I think the forensic audit really shows that the the benefits was very beneficial to the district. If we can go to the next slide, I think we have a as you're aware, the, and I think you've heard this before, that the guaranteed, the guaranteed maximum price of the GMP contract was almost $66 million, which was approved by the Board. And the total project cost was a little under $57 million, resulting in a savings to the district of about $9 million. The pencil was really sharpened for, they had multiple sub-train bidders building. B1, B2 was really on time and on budget and all, was on time and on budget. Horace Mann started out in 2002, 6, 2008 as a small two-story, $40 million building located next to the auditorium. By the time that project was final, the scope had evolved into an $80 million project. I think in the last couple of weeks, the district received, or received a presentation, if we can go to the next slide briefly, received a presentation on the Democrat, demographic analysis and enrollment projections. The facilities, I think one of the things that can be read from the demographic study, and if we can go to the next slide, is that the facilities are in fact one of the issues that may be impacting enrollment in the district. We do have the facilities. We do have the capacity. We just need to better the facilities that the district has. I think the auditors or the demographic analysis points out in fact that Horace Mann, when it was completed in 2016, there were more students enrolling in the school and tracking the cohort sizes from one year to the next. And hopefully, as other, Elradao comes back online, you will see similar increases. If, to be exact, that the facilities are a deciding factor for, for families. Thank you for your attention. I'd like to turn this over to Ted Fenton to make a portion of the presentation.
Hi, everyone here. Will see me? I'm not sure if I can speak back. So thank you, Jason, and hello, Dr. Breggy and members of the Board who are in attendance. By way of background, up until last year, I had three kids in the district. This year, I have two. I first became aware of the various construction issues in the district when my oldest was in first grade at Elradao. And the Board discovered that the massive Coppola had become dislodged. And he was moved out of the classroom and into pods for the remainder of his time at Elradao until he and his brothers were moved over to Hawthorne when the construction commenced at Elradao. Little did I know, or my wife, the time did we know that this would be only the beginning of a long story that has yet to have a happy ending. We moved to Beverly Hills so that our kids could have the kind of elite, public, educational, local, community experience that my wife had, who attended Hawthorne at Beverly High. My wife and I both got involved to the extent we could, to do whatever we could to help. Me and my wife from the PTA, both of us involved in two bond committees, and now I on the CCAC. I was originally asked to consider joining the CCAC because of my background in real estate development. I know Dr. Breggy gave you at least a snippet on my background. I don't need to get into that. But it is almost a quarter century in, in real estate and about $9 billion of deals, over half of which has been development. I was skeptical of the process. I was skeptical of the capabilities to get this massive project off the ground, let alone completed, and worried about how the entire process would unfold, certainly given how things started for us in the district with our children. I eventually joined the CCAC, not for all of that, but for my kids and for the children of the district who have attended substandard neglected facilities for too long. I tried to help. I joined to help my community. When I first got involved in district, the kids were moved into pods without a plan of action. Previous boards couldn't agree on moving forward with the bond. It sadly failed with a fairly high 64% of positive vote. Our facilities were poorly overseen, and we had issues with our construction manager, facilities management, on and on. DSA and trades contractors in the area and throughout the state thought that Beverly Hills was a mess, didn't really want to touch us with a 10-foot pole, and rightfully so, we were. But I'm here to say that over this period of time, and from my viewpoint, my experience in the CCAC and my investigations, we've come a long way. Buildings one and, B1 and two have been completed, came in under budget, on time, actually early, and came out beautifully. In my opinion, we are on the right course, albeit with bumps on the road. I'm in a business where, in the construction development business, we all are facing them. But our bond management and our building program is working. It ain't broke. So as the saying goes, I don't think we need to fix it. Does it mean we need to moderate? Does it mean we need to tweak? Absolutely. Does it mean we need to throw it out and stop what we've done and not finish what we started? I don't believe that's the right course of action. We should stay on course, finish what we started with the team that we brought in to do the work and, and finish this school district that's something we, our children can, can appreciate and we can all be proud of. So with that, I'll get into where, where we are. You know what? Let me make sure. Oh, yeah, good, okay. Next, so first we'll talk about cost escalation and market conditions. Next slide. As we all know, and as we know when we go to the grocery store, to the gas station, and watch the news, and frankly, and, you know, do it yourself at home or in my business in actual real estate development, we've all been hit by a 40-year spike in inflation and, and costs and supply chain issues. This has hit every aspect, certainly of the construction business, public works even worse. Next slide. You know, this slide shows that, you know, in 2021, material prices were up 20%. But what it doesn't say is that in 19, in 2020, they were also up close to 20%. And what it doesn't also say is that labor constraints have not just driven inputs, but the ability to get labor and, and the cost, the increasing cost of that labor. Next slide. This slide shows just the various material input jumps in price. And frankly, it doesn't even cover everything. Lumber prices by 1,000 board feet went from, you know, ranged an average of 300 to 400 pre-pandemic to a jump to 1,700, a, over a four-fold increase. It came down to 800. It's now still around 1,200. So a three-fold increase from pre-pandemic when we were estimating these costs. This is up and down the entire supply chain, unfortunately. Well, fortunately, demand has been much more than people thought. But unfortunately, no one in the sector, no one in the mills, no one who was producing the materials, thought that was going to be the case. So as production ramped down, demand has continued to surge. Costs have spiked through the roof and made construction very difficult to project, predict the amount of escalations. And frankly, everyone in my business has been wrong. And we couldn't possibly have, you know, anticipated the spike in prices that we've seen over the last two years. Next slide. This just shows the, the month-over-month and 12-month percentage changes. Obviously, you can see going back to the end of '20 when production waned but demand surged, what happened to the producer price index. So next slide. So where are we on the numbers today? There were some comments earlier about change in numbers. Well, anytime you're doing an adaptive reuse where, where you're using existing buildings and you're going into the walls. You you don't know what you're going to find. It's one of the issues with trying to maintain old historic buildings as opposed to building new. There were some numbers that were given last year that had assumed worst case scenario. And thankfully, actually, in this particular case, once we dug, got into the walls and saw the condition of the footings. Actually, things were a little bit better than than that worst case scenario that was discussed last year. Also, those numbers and, you know, our sixty nine million dollar shortfall and and even the number that was given last year. That number did not include this, the SSMP reimbursement, our sixty nine million dollars, it does. So that's our mid range case of what we believe that we'll get back for the twenty million dollars of SSMP reimbursements. Once the app, once the application is filed, unfortunately, you just can't book that that positive cash flow until the application is filed. But the sixty nine million dollars is what what the CCAC, what what our bond manager believes the cost to complete of all the work would be. That includes the twenty one million dollars of the legacy wells that Howard alluded to earlier. That does also include the twenty million dollars of SSMP reimbursement.
Rebecca, could you advance the slide, please?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Howard. Yeah, I thought I was on that. That's on my screen. So, yes, so the sixty eight million dollars is the 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 cost to complete. The twenty million is the SSMP seismic mitigation. So the forty eight million dollars, but then the twenty one million dollars to abandon and remediate the legacy wells. The additional twenty one gets us back up to sixty nine million dollars. Next slide. So this cash flow summary was validated by Key Analytics, the subsidiary of California Financial Services. Key Analytics provides project revenue and expenditure tracking and reporting. And so, you know, note that the anticipated El Rodeo SSMP cannot be booked as revenue. So therefore, they're showing the eighty nine million dollars that that we discussed. But, you know, less than twenty million gets us to the sixty nine. But these numbers have been audited and validated by third parties. Next slide. I think part of what's really critical to discuss and understand in all this is to decide whether or not the program is working. Are we on the right course is why is there a shortfall? Well, for one thing, I discussed escalations in the market. No one could have possibly predicted the escalations in costs that have occurred over the last two, two years. They're. They're historic. I mean, we haven't seen inflation like this in forty years. We haven't seen a two year run up in costs. Certainly not in my career and I can't think back to whenever over a two year period, they've escalated to this extent. If you look at the twenty one million dollars of the legacy, additional legacy well remediation, you know, in pull that out. We are, you know, less than six percent over the total budget. And frankly, there's an additional twenty seven million dollars of cost, twenty million had to do with metro litigation. You know, another seven million dollars for other items that came up that were outside the original bond scope. You take that out and we're less than three percent over the the seven hundred and fifty seven million dollar budget. I'll tell you that in my business, if we only miss by three percent, as a worst case, that would be pretty good. Especially in light of the two year run up we've had in in cost escalation. So I just want to put it in perspective. That of the twenty seven million dollars that was that was foisted upon. You know, the the bond manager and to get that done out of monies that was not originally allocated to the bond. Twenty one million dollars of additional Venico remediation. That leaves forty eight million dollars that we missed on a seven hundred and fifty seven million dollar project. Again, that's less than three percent. In the biggest two year run up in escalations in a pandemic with metro and everything going on. I I still consider that as success and certainly leads to a perspective of. This this thing broke, the the program is working. We've got two beautiful buildings to show for it and there are reasons for why we are where we are. Next slide.
Ted, I'm sorry, can I say one question? The sixty nine million, you just, I got the twenty one million was the legacy wells. What was the sixty nine million?
So there's forty eight, if you go, there's forty eight million dollars. Sorry, there's sixty eight million dollars to complete. But there's twenty million dollars of SSMP mitigation funds. So that leaves forty eight million dollars to complete the project. But there's also the twenty one million dollars of legacy wells on top of that, that brings the forty eight million dollar cost to complete up to sixty nine million. Does that make sense?
My understanding is that the twenty one million is not, that's not, that's just to do the oil well, that's not going to complete all the work.
Yeah, well, that's. A portion that has been increased. From the from the remainder of the the oil well remediation that that Howard touched on earlier, that's not all the work. That's just additional work that came up. As we were, you know, as we were working towards this latter stage of twenty twenty one in in estimating the final cost to complete.
For. For restoring the area after it's been done.
Pam, are you?
I'm frustrated with that because my understanding is that it's just an ARB time and materials.
Pam, are you, are you on to answer questions about?
I am, I am. I'm kind of trying, just a second.
I mean, there's consulting fees and all the other fees that are associated with that.
Yeah. So Mrs. Wells, the twenty one million is for the legacy wells, not for the Venico wells? Not for the, the Venico restoration is not included in the twenty one. It's included in the other parts of the budget. So it's.
Wells, the twenty one million, my understanding was a quote from ARB. But what about all the other associated consulting costs and fees that will go with completing that total project?
The twenty one million dollars includes a percentage of soft costs.
I heard it was thirty.
I mean, originally it was thirty, but I mean, I think that in addition to ARB's costs are the quote that you got, all the other costs to the district.
Yes. So we got an ad quote from ARB. And we added soft costs to get to the twenty one million.
And that's to restore the entire, that area.
This is for the legacy wells, yes, not restoration of the Venico site. That's a separate budget. That's included in the forty eight million.
So it went from thirty million to twenty one million?
It did. So we actually have good news.
Okay, so. Obviously, all of the conversation that could be had about the wells, but just moving on, next slide. I I had spoken about some of the the expenditures that were outside of the building program, but that still had to come out of the funds. This is the, you know, almost twenty eight million dollars. Twenty million alone, of which was MTA litigation that just to give again, some perspective on where we are and and why we have a. You know, why there is a shortfall at this point, you know, twenty eight million dollars of of that is is for money that was outside the scope. So just wanted to give some perspective on that background. Next slide, please. So, you know, we are now at a place where we have a a much better idea of what it's going to take to finish. We are certainly not experts or here to to dictate to the board how how to find the capital. We do have some ideas, obviously, though this is not the focus of this presentation. Next slide. The on August, so before determining what type of financing options work best to fund the completion of this district's school construction program. You know, we we wanted to at least identify some potential revenue sources, and I know the board has already started to consider this. On August eleventh, twenty twenty, the board acted and approved the the employment of a surplus property, a seven eleven advisory committee. On April nineteenth, twenty twenty one, the seven eleven committee issued its final report and recommendations. On May eleventh, the Board of Directors elected, showed the district office to be surplus property. That same day, waived the request for an RFP process. And one of the things the board considered, which frankly, from my perspective is a very good one, is to look into entering along the long term ground lease for the developer. That's prime property surrounded by residential. That could be very accretive to the district, you know, through a long term ground lease without ceding complete control of the property. And then under SB fourteen thirteen and AB thirty three oh eight. You know, certainly encourages residential units to be built on that site. Next, let's see, so. Regarding the district office, the seven eleven committee, just to get some things out to discuss, recommended that the district declares the the district office surplus property. Enter into a long term ground lease. Work work towards a residential development such as, you know, multifamily, which is, you know, surrounding complementary use to the neighborhood. Sorry, I'm hearing feedback.
You can go ahead, Ted.
So the anyway, so in in some, the seven eleven committee recommended that the district waive the RFP process, traditional bid process. Where the district is obligated to sell to the highest bidder and actually enter into direct negotiations with potential developers. To to create revenue for the district. On May eleventh, twenty twenty one, the board voted unanimously to waive that and move forward with that process. So the CCAC in short agrees with the recommendations of that committee and agrees with the board's actions to waive that RFP process. And proceed with monetizing the value of that site. You know, unfortunately, given where things are in the state and a recent proposal in in June of twenty two, sorry, next slide, please. A state ballot initiative would limit the ability for schools to raise funds. We we know from when our first bond measure failed, getting to its vote is, you know, incredibly difficult. And so Prop thirty nine, the fifty five percent threshold would be eliminated, obviously making it very difficult. To go forward with with any new bond measures. Not that a bond measure would be all too popular right now, but it it could get even more difficult. Should we go down that path? So next slide. So. Again, whether it's through, you know, what the seven eleven committee has deemed for excess surplus property. Grants, working with the city on on the abatement costs for the wells. There are, you know, multiple sources of revenue that the board can look to. We're not here to say which ones they should be. We're here to say there are available additional resources, additional funds. We're here to say that the program is working, the buildings are getting completed. And we are getting closer to the end and and have a very good idea now of of where things need to be and where they need to be to get completed. So, you know, we do believe, next slide. That more, you know, more study sessions is a great start. We appreciate the time that more study sessions need to be had. You know, the CCAC notes that the the board's last construction study session was in October twenty twenty one. Since that time, the board's appointed a new member. The CCAC recommends that the board continue to hold a series of construction study sessions to address the issues identified by the CCAC, the CBOC and the FCC. Next slide. If we can move forward and if we can make the tough decisions to move this forward and figure out how to get it done. You know, I do believe that we will have a magnificent high school campus. We'll have a beautiful, I mean, obviously, El Rodeo is separate. We'll have a beautiful K five new campus. Horace Mann is a relatively new campus. A campus and facilities that that we can be proud of. If it's not completed, next slide. And you've all seen the pictures and we're not here for doom and gloom, but we all know what happens if we don't complete. We we don't get the fields, we don't get the new building C, we're stuck with Conheim. We're stuck with trailers and and bins and dirt and fences. Next slide. We all know what the high school looks like. I I don't need to tell all of you. Next slide. One thing near and dear to me is, you know, my boys all play baseball and play basketball and I don't want this to look, my son is in seventh grade. He's going to be in the high school and it won't even be ready, even if all things go well, but maybe for the second half of his high school tenure. I don't want this to be his legacy. I don't want this to be him having to play baseball over Los Angeles guy. I want him to be proud of his school. I don't want it to look like this. There won't be fields, there won't be a softball field. They'll be playing makeshift on the football field or it feels, you know, miles away, not on their high school campus. Next slide. Obviously, there's a lot of dirt to be moved around for for Venico and the wells. You know, there's a lot of this condition that has to get filled and fixed anyway. If we shut things down, obviously, there will be holes in in the in the in the process and the fields in fencing, there will be, you know. I don't want to spend millions of dollars to put lipstick on the pig. Next slide. Next, yeah, next slide. Obviously, we have scaffolding along Olympic. We need to finish all these projects, but I think you all know that. So next slide. So. Where we really are in conclusion is, yes, this is Harry Truman, and I think actually this Donna opened up with the buck stops here. Well, it does. And and the buck stops with this board. You've inherited things from previous boards, some of which they did right, some of which they kicked the can too too long. And they couldn't come together to make hard decisions that for thirty years compounded problems that have led to where we are now. But the good news is that we did pass a bond. We did get a bond manager in who's now completed the first two buildings. We doubt, we do now know what we need to finish the project. We do know there's deficiency and so the board does have to figure out how how to fill that gap. But some may think that that the way to deal with this is to shut things down. Put, you know, take the fences down, plant grass on the front lawn and, you know, take a picture in front of the grass and say, look, we, you know, we finished what we did. And now we got these fences down and now now everything is great. I I just don't agree. And in my business, we we finish what we start, we figure out how to get it done. To me. Should should there be third party review to make you comfortable where the costs are? Absolutely. Should you renegotiate components of the contract that you're not comfortable with? Have that conversation. But should you solicit feedback from the DSA to figure out what happens if we really do stop this building process? What are the ramifications from that decision? Should you solicit feedback from DLR or architect and see what their relationship is with the weather bar manager, what they think about how things are going? Absolutely. Should you solicit feedback from Pro West? I was there originally when we interviewed Pro West and other construction groups. And and I think they've done a fine job and I think you should. Discuss with with Pro West, you know, how things are going and what their relationship is with our bond manager. There's there's diligence that should be done. I'm not saying to go into this blindly. But but there's investigations and and conclusions that you need to come to, I believe, that will, I think. Continue to convince you that we're on the right path. So to me, you know, as the the elected officials. It is your job to make the hard decisions. It is your job to do the tedious work. To help make sure that our children get the schools, get the facilities that promised them that they had, that we've come to expect and that our. Our community should be proud of. The hero in this story to me are those who step up and finish what we started, figure out how to complete the work and get this done. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I'll see the floor.
Thank you very much, Ted. Does anyone want to make a quick comment because it's already five thirty?
Yeah.
You have to leave, so.
Comment. So. Unfortunately, this was scheduled on Friday night. I have Shabbat and I've already shared with my board members that I was going to have to leave at five thirty. But I wanted to thank the members of the committee, all of you, Howard, Jason. Ted, thank you for. All of the information, for all of the work that you guys have put in. Clearly, you guys are. Very one, passionate and you have a lot of information to share. And I I do hope we have a follow up study session because I have, I have loads of the questions here to kind of come up to speed. And so we can make a good decision going forward. I will say that I. Think I think the whole board, but I'll speak for myself. I mean, everyone shares the concerns about. The facilities, I think everyone wants the scope of the work to be. Completed. From my perspective, just in business, I can tell you, I have no doubt there. I mean, there's been a considerable amount of escalation in all supply chain. There's, there is inflation. I mean. All of this stuff is is hitting all businesses and our business is no different. So like I. I definitely believe that all those things exist. I also. Believe that there have been a number of things that have caught us. Maybe flat footed to some extent. There's, sounds like there has been scope creep. There's been things that we did not realize. When it came to where the oil wells were and how to remediate them. I mean. Like all of that makes sense to me. I really wanted to get into a lot of the detail. But with all of that said. My frustration, what I said when I was being interviewed for this board, what I've said time and time again. Is that it feels like there's lack of governance and lack of accountability with how this whole process has worked over the years. And I think that even this committee being here tonight and giving us a presentation now after years from what I understand. Is further like evidence of the fact that we have not had the proper accountability and governance on this construction program. I went back and looked at the deck from like, I think it was two thousand eighteen when this committee was being set up. As Donna said earlier, there were supposed to be five to six members, there were supposed to be terms, there was supposed to be. Selection by facilities committee and we were supposed to be getting quarterly reports as a board at a minimum. And none of that happened. So it's like, yes, the buck does stop with this board. Yes, I want to see this program done. But I personally, as a board member, I'm very frustrated that there has been a lack of discussion here, lack of information, making. of discussion here, lack of information making its way to this board, what feels like for years. So we need to put in the time. We need to have more study sessions to really come and understand everything that's happened here and make decisions. And I will say that everyone keeps saying that we're doubting this program, like, or or at least suggesting that we don't want to see this program through. I don't think that's true. But I keep saying time and time again, at least what I'm saying is, I want accountability, and I want proper governance over this program. And I think just by the fact that we're having this conversation tonight, and all of a sudden, all this information is being thrown at us, is just it it it's just further showing us that we we have a problem on our hands. I'm going to move to a portable of a device and keep listening for as long as I can. But but again, thank you guys very much for being here tonight and sharing this information. And I hope this is the start of a conversation because there's a lot to unpack in that the presentation that I look forward to doing.
Thank you. Michelle, would you like to?
I was gonna ask my student member, Eli, would you like to say something first?
Oh, you can go first.
Okay, I just want to echo everything that my colleague is telling me just now. I know that the members of the CCAC are very passionate about the program, and seeing that it comes with the inclusion. And I want to thank them for their comprehensive report. But I do, I I for one worried about this maybe getting done, and I think that we need to have more discussions. And as I said, I really echo the words that Mr. Halini expressed, and I think we can all agree with, we're all concerned, and we're all very much aware of what's going on. So with that, I'll.
Thank you. I'd like to to say a lot of the same, is that I agree with a lot of what Mrs. Mr. Who do you mean, Marcus have said, just about the general transparency and ensuring that this, that the buck really does stop here, as was said before, and that we are getting all the information that we can in a transparent and open manner. And I think that we now have the framework in place to do so. But looking forward to the future, having more presentations like this, and hopefully seeing a more inclusive format possibly for the CCAC.
Thank you, Eli. Dr. Stern, do you have any?
Sure.
First of all, thank you so much, gentlemen, for an amazing presentation. I I like everything. I like the way you communicated it. I thought it was overall pretty easy to understand and to decipher a lot of the numbers and the figures. A couple of small questions that I have. When you talk about the the state, the SSM MP, so you might, I'm understanding that this is an application for money that can be possibly given to the school district. Is that is that what that means?
Yes.
So that's money that we could potentially receive towards this shortfall.
Yeah, trustee, Dr. Stern, it's the same process that we have. Those funds are available. It's the same process where we got funding from the state for this program with Horace Mann, with B one, B two, B three, B four, we were approved, so we can, we, the company can book that money that's coming in. And soon as the application goes in on El Rodeo, those funds, to some degree, whether it's whether it's 20 million, maybe a little less, maybe a little bit more, they negotiate it once the application's in and approved, just like they're doing with B three, B four. It's a state program that's been running for a couple of years now. And we have received money from the state on that for the other projects.
And then the other thought I had is, look at the other revenue and financing options. I mean, you know, these are possible, but they're they're vague, and it it would be, you know, obviously, a lot of oversight and a lot of manpower to to get a lot of these to work. And it's sort of, it's disappointing that, you know, for many reasons, which are perhaps out of our control, but the pandemic and the shortfall that has happened. But, you know, a lot of the suggestions seem like they are pretty vague, and they have to be really be developed, I think, to be serious viable options.
And Dr. Stern, and that's a good point. And your CBO, as an individual, is aware of an individual that is actually on retainer with the district, who's an expert in public private development projects. He was, he was looked at when the seven eleven committee was being formatted and whatever recommendations that they were going to make. And he actually had, they have a presentation that he gives to school districts that talks specifically about this type of funding. So that may be something that Dr. Braggy or the board may want to inquire with the CBO about with Mr. Roach.
And then another thought I have, another theme, is that I mean, I'm aware that there's obviously an intersection between construction and modernization and security and security equipment and security surveillance and those sorts of things. And I haven't heard anything about that or any status or, you know, concern for that. And as a parent, as a board member, too, I remain very concerned about the the funds that we use to apply for that towards that in terms of construction. And, you know, do you have any comments on that?
Yes.
Outlay that and where what has been developed, given?
Yes, Dr. Stern, the security was beyond the scope of the CCAC. We don't have the expertise in security. We never profess to. At the time, the CCA was, CCAC was created, there was a security steering committee, and then the district hired a company to monitor or oversee security. You also had the gentleman by the name of Scott Lovelace, which was your security person. So that aspect, we did not look into because the district had other avenues and other expertise, people with expertise dealing with security. So that was beyond the scope of this committee.
Thank you.
Now, we have any comments?
Um, yeah, just quickly. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. I I think I I keep on hearing the word transparency. That's the buzzword, transparency, accountability, transparency. And my question for everybody who brings that term is, what do you feel is not being transparent? All of the contracts that we support for the program, we vote on in public, they're posted contracts. All of the accounting, we understand that bond management program has an open door policy. We request things, we can get any information. So what I'm, what I'm curious is, at this time, when when I've heard three of my colleagues say the word transparency is is an issue for them, and that they tried to public comment, tried to shed doubt on the viability of the committee, doesn't seem appropriate. The committee had no obligation to report to us on any particular schedule. But now that B one, that B two is finished, and now that they were able to finally verify through a third party, the final numbers, that information is ready to come in front of us. I I just, I wish people would be, we would be more transparent when we say we want more transparency. Because if there's something that we aren't getting, we should specifically ask for it. And with an over $750 million bond program, we can ask as a board for anything. We're allowed to ask for anything. And I don't like, and I've dealt with this for years, when on any subject, not just construction, when people throw out the term, we need more accountability and transparency. No, I think what we need to do as a board is come together for the right things, and you ask the right questions, and get the right answers, so we can make the right decisions. We're starting to do that tonight, and hopefully we'll continue, like Gabe said, hopefully we continue this conversation. But I don't feel like I'm ever getting duped. I don't feel like I'm fooling the community. I don't feel that that's ever the case. I feel what it is, is, in all honesty, there's a lot to unpack here. And this, and truly understand every component of everything that was discussed tonight would take days. It would take days for us, for us to either relate that to the community or even individually understand these components. So it's really important for us to arm ourselves with as much information as possible before we make further decisions about the program, how we're going to finish, how we're going to get, how we're going to get funding. These are all big question marks. Dr. Stern brought it up, and I think that addressing this with with our CBO and with our finance committee, giving direction, and keeping it all under committees that can now address things that are accountable, that are transparent, that do post minutes, that do publicize their meetings. It can have a community involvement in finding the solutions to the issues that were brought up to. But the one thing I I did not hear tonight is that the actual program being the problem. The program is not the problem. If all of these other things are the problem, then at least we should address the actual problems and not create a problem out of something that is not. So thank you, gentlemen, for that, and I look forward to moving forward with this program to the best of our financial ability.
Um, well, I'd like to thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for taking the time to put together this presentation. Um, I definitely believe that you're all very passionate about the program and the projects that we have. Um, I agree with my colleagues on on many points, and on some, I I disagree. I think that, well, first of all, in terms of agreeing, I would say that I believe that all of us on this board want to see these projects completed and want to see our schools to be finished. And that is all of our goal. I I feel comfortable saying that that's what we want, and nobody intends to stop this program or in any way leave the schools in the state that they're in. I think the bigger question that we have is, you know, reviewing where we are at at this point and seeing why we are in the state that we are in. Um, I think it's about not a question of whether we want to do these projects. It's a question of reviewing how our program management has been. And, you know, from where I stand, we we're $129 million short. You can say we're a different number, but if you want to go into transparency, there's a lot of different numbers and how you want to present them, they can look different. But we know we're short, and we didn't find out that we were short until recently. And to me, that is an area that could have huge improvement. We should be having better reporting along the way, instead of hearing about this at this stage in the game, that now we're short. I I think that from a management standpoint, having that transparency in our reporting and understanding where we are and when, so that we can start addressing these issues earlier on. I don't think that we are on time, and I don't think that we're on budget. And that's, you know, really where I stand, about reviewing where where we are and how we got here, and how do we make that better. Not a question of whether we want to finish our school projects, our our construction programs, and we want to see completed schools, because I 100% want to see that. And I appreciate you bringing forth some of the other ideas that we've had come to us from the seven eleven committee, as well as other ideas for financing, because I think it's really important for us to be creative and to look at the many different resources that we can, that we can access in ways to complete the program. And I I really believe strongly that we all have that commitment. When I, when I look at accountability and transparency, to Noah's point, for example, I I just don't think that we see everything in one, in in the big picture. So when we talk about projects that got added, you're not talking about projects that got deleted. There was, you know, in the original bond project, in the original bond proposal, the projects that were identified included a parking structure at the high school for, I think it was, I want to say 85 million, but I maybe misspeaking on the number. There was an elevated parking structure with the playground at El Rodeo that's been eliminated. There were dollars that were earmarked for Hawthorne that's been eliminated. So as well as things being added on, there, there's been some very big ticket items that have been eliminated, and we're short. So I think we have to look at it in the whole picture, instead of looking at it piecemeal. And I think that's a more honest conversation and a more transparent conversation about where we are on our bond program. I think that, you know, the fact that that oil wells went from 30 million to today, now they're 21 million, it's speculative for in both instances. So I I just don't think we can speak in absolutes. I think we have to consider many of the other costs. We don't talk about all the other consulting fees and soft costs that wanted to be one of B two. We talked about the Pro West contract and the guaranteed max price. But I'm curious to know, what is the, what was the budget for B one and B two all in, with all the consulting fees and all the other fees that went to the district that we funded with the bonds, that were part of B one and B two? That's not part of the Pro West contract. So yes, the Pro West guaranteed max price with on time and under budget, I believe. I'd have to check on the timing, but clearly, it was under budget, and there was enough contingency in there to refund four and a half million dollars to Pro West. So that even though we've had escalation and we've had COVID, we were able to have four and a half, nine million left in contingency on that contract. So I I think there's a lot to look at, and that we should all use our resources. I really appreciate having people in the community like yourselves that are willing to volunteer their time and their expertise, so that we can have the best schools possible, and that we can complete this construction program. I think our common ground is that's what we all want to see, and we want to see it done as fast as possible, and having the dollars that we can find accessible for us to do so, and and doing so in an efficient way. So I just would say again, thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for putting this presentation together. And I'm going to pass this on to Dr. Braggy.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mr. Goldstein, Mr. Fenton, Mr. Run, for being part of the committee. I have shared with the board the some clarification about the committee. This was a committee that Mr. Blake used in a former district, and when he came to our district, he shared this with us. It was intriguing about using community partnerships, a draft of the committee makeup and responsibilities. A draft presentation was made in May of 2018. And that was a draft presentation that was made to the board. And that committee was put together, and we met several times. It was a very helpful committee to me along the way. The reporting piece, the officer piece, those types of things, that that was never presented to the people that were applying for the committee. That was all in that draft form. So I wanted to share that information with all of you. And the the committee has been meeting. There hasn't been information to share to the board, but it has been an active committee. And I also appreciate this opportunity for this committee to share information with the board tonight. So thank you.
Can I say, can I say one more thing before the committee dismiss?
Sure.
Thank you. I think, Howard, your your team had a third party validate some numbers. And I think President Wells is is operating on, you know, there's a difference of $60 million between the number she presented and the number you guys presented. I I think at some, at some point, we're going to need either validation, either through finance committee or somebody, to give us a number to work with. So I I don't, I I think, and I know that Pam Johnson is on, I don't know if she can actually address this. I know she deals with both Wade and our finances. So I'd like to understand from, because you presented a number from CAC, but if I can maybe hear from Pam, or we can try to get, we we need a springboard, right? We need a point to start with, so we can, you know, be having a shortfall of 129 million. It's much different than having a shortfall of 69 million. So I think that's going to help us move forward. Go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. So both numbers are correct. The 129 million is worst case scenario, if you bid the projects in 2024. The CCAC's numbers are presuming that you go, that you go ahead right now. So the difference is escalation.
Thank you for the clarification.
Right.
I understand that.
I have another question about the security. I mean, I know that, like, the numbers that you presented on this presentation say 5.7 million, and, you know, by my rough estimate, we're over 10 on security. So I think that, you know, all of these numbers, we kind of need to look at more, in a more global way, where the bond dollars have gone.
Okay, that's, that would be difficult to go from five, seven to 10, because what you have are the numbers from the inception of the program that have been tabulated by a third party. And and all of their information comes from what is entered into the district's database. So the budget number that we gave you, the 5.7 million comes right from the district's database.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the warrants that have been on our agendas. But I think we should, to my point, I think we should follow up on this and have more clarity.
And I I might add, you had mentioned before, a question, your question was, what was the original budget for B one, B two? And a 2018 budget all in was 79 million, 50,000. And it actually came in at 74 million and change because of the savings that were returned to the district. And it actually came in at 74 million and change because of the savings that were returned to the district.
Do you have any more questions? Anyone else? Okay, Howard and Ted and Jason, thank you so much for your presentation. And we are going to move on to the next item on our agenda.
Okay. Well, nice, nice speaking with you all and we're, we're here to help. So hopefully, as I think someone mentioned earlier, this is the start of many conversations to get to the, the right answer.
Thanks so much.
Take care.
Good night. Okay. Next item on our agenda is, I'm crossing my agenda, but I want to say it's an IP, construction update. So Don Blake and Pam Johnson.
I want to ask a question here of participants. I know this has gone probably a little later than we had scheduled. We have a slide presentation, a number of slides that are here regarding updates, which are the typical update that we would do normally at a board meeting. Plus, we have material that has to do with addressing budget information and cash flow information and backup information that's applied to otherwise to the committees. I could go through that, but in the interest of time, I do have some material, Dr. Brady, if you could put that up for me. These are some, what I'd like also presenting here in terms of update. If the, the review, unless you would like me to go through the slides with you or go through the, if you have questions from the budget material and accounting material that Pam provides, happy to do that. But I think in the interest of time, I'd like to go through with you some things that I think the board needs to be aware going forward in your decision making about program, about how the program's been delivered. I get the point that there's some concern or there's some suspicion, I would even say regarding this program or how it's delivered or how we do it. So what I'd like to do, because you need to make those decisions about the program and how you want it delivered. And you need, and I know you'll be making decisions about who you're going to use to have it delivered. So going forward, lots of decisions and direction. You have some decisions to make about the program delivery, how you might want to have it delivered differently. But more importantly, who is going to deliver it for you? That's ahead of you. So what I'm going to do, I have Dr. Brady, if you could put that up.
Yes. And if you can just clarify which information is it? Oh, okay.
March 4th. It's the last slide, material for the last slide. There you go. So this is mostly for the entire board and each of these bullet points can certainly be items that we can come back and provide more detail for if you'd like, but this is a, this is a high altitude. Most of the things that you see here are the things that we otherwise do on a daily basis. Our firm, combination of our firm, combination of, as it were, general counsel. And you'll see an asterisk on each of these lineups. What that means is that's an item that would require legal counsel. So this information I'm going to go through fairly quickly, but I want to get to the piece on B3, B4 and give you some clarity and understanding of what actually goes on in the building portion of this program. I know that's not what you were talking about tonight, but I want to at least bring you up to speed on that. So first we'll start with, these are topics. These are direction that you will have in front of you to consider as you consider going forward. Reconciliation of the NTA oil well reimbursement is about $500,000 there that our team and the previous law firm were managing and mitigating on behalf of the district. This is about $500,000 there that you'll need to make decisions about direction to go forward with. There's some decisions. Next one is important. Our issues regarding monitoring. There's various layers and complications regarding monitoring because what I'm going to be showing you about some other points is 80 years ago, a decision was made to build this school campus on an oil field. And the consequence of making that choice to build them on an oil field is there'll be some monitoring for various components that will go on forever. Because the soil and the soil conditions have methane mitigation and monitoring requirements. So you make some decisions about some methane mitigation issues going forward. Depending on what decisions you make, you'll need to consider that. I would recommend that as you think those things through, that that piece will be part of your decision making. Eminent domain lawsuit, replace the PMK. That would be a decision, some direction you'll need to make. A big one here wrapped into that component is clear title regarding LAUSD's claim to ownership. You do not have clear title. And there, when we talk about utilities, we also do not have clear title on portions of Heathrow that will need to be continued direction and decision. Some of that will be legal and some will be how, how you would like and to whom you would like that work to be done. Resolve the DTSC site permit at the high school. This is a big one. This is something that has been in play at least almost five years that I've been here. We're getting close to that conclusion that will be done when the final design for the site will could be completed. This is an important one. Pay the critical consultants, consultants timely for the last two years. That has not been the experience and I highly recommend that that piece be attended to and changed. DSA inspector staffing, that's a big one currently. So you know where we are, some board knows where we are in your decisions going forward on the DSA inspectors. Mike Barbera is currently the inspector, it's called inspector of record for DSA. He's the onsite full-time inspector. And understanding, and I understand that the board is not familiar with how things work at DSA, but this is a piece of information I'd like, I'd like to be aware of going forward. So you're informed. Because of who Mike Barbera is and my reputation with DSA, we have one DSA inspector for both Elrodale and the high school. That is highly unusual, very unusual. Generally speaking, Mike Barbera is responsible for what's called semi-monthly reports at DSA. There are six. Typically you would have six inspectors. You have one. And one assistant who is also certified DSA inspector. Currently, basically the idea, what does it mean to you? Your daily cost is about $2,500 for one DSA inspector and one assistant. The staff going forward, if you choose whatever delivery method you want to choose, then you will need minimum of six DSA inspectors. The one who makes the final decision about who is that person, who gives the confidence of that person is the architect of record and the structural engineer. They sign off on who that's, who they feel they want that DSA inspector to be the inspector of record. Here's the difference. You're currently spending about 2,500 a day for DSA inspection. If there's a change, we do something different, then you'll be providing more than just one DSA inspector. That costs with $15,200 a day for DSA inspections to change. I would like you to know that and be part of your decision making. I, right now, DSA inspectors are huge premium. Okay, so maintain ProCore. That's important. The ProCore is an automated database. And when, at least it was my decision, you can decide how you want to do it. But my decision was to use ProCore and have the district own the license and pay for the license. I know there's been some concerns and questions along the way about cost and about value. And I'd recommend that the district always own the data, the database, I mean, all the database, all emails, all transmittals, all RFIs, everything relating to the project in its entirety, that the district own that database. The last program manager who left, left with the license in all of the database. So it's an important decision to make. Next important one here is to maintain the document management system we use currently. We, we have someone that the district pays that we do scanning and copying of all hard documents. Now it'd be drawings, correspondence, invoices, all documents relating to the entire program is copied and put in a file system on the F drive, F drive with the district of which the district owns. That's currently about five terabytes of documentation. That's been put in. We went as far back as we could with documents and we are current. And we do this on a daily basis. So your file system is current. On the program side, what, what I'm not presenting here would be something Pam Johnson would be also suggesting to, we could do that in a separate meeting. This is specifically project-based information that I want to present to you for your consideration for direction. Okay, the Venico site. What's important on here is to finish the water leak cleanup. We're about 90% complete at the moment. We have an insurance claim that needs to be resolved and will require legal attention. It's important to understand about the Venico site is in order to finish it, you'll need to decide or give direction for how you want to build the retaining wall. It's been approved by DSA. It's called retaining wall number five. You'll need to put that retaining wall in, in order to put the dirt, eight feet of dirt on top of the Venico site, which would be necessary to get your approval from both Calgem for, for the 19 wells and DSA, excuse me, DTSC for what's called the wrap, which is the completed permit for that, for that scope of work. Complete the wrap that's in a band, determine and make a decision about abandoning the legacy wells. So can, can we go up further, please? Move the document up.
Don, for the, for the decision about the retaining wall and aren't we waiting for the design drawings for that to come back before we are able to move forward on, on that part?
No, no, you have a, the, the retaining wall is approved from DSA.
But I thought we couldn't do that work until we have the design drawings from, out of DLR.
That's for the site work now.
Right, but it's related to the site work.
But they, they're separate projects. So you can do retaining wall.
It's possible. The reason why we, if you will, segmented the retaining walls into four separate A numbers to go to DSA was to give you the flexibility to be able to do the retaining wall just for Venico, which wraps around Olympic and comes up a portion of the Heath Road. The rest of those have to do with, if you want to go forward with the, with the grading or mass grading, you have that flexibility. But what I'm saying is that the retaining wall for what we call retaining wall number five has been approved at DSA. We're completing the demo or the repair from the water damage and moved out all the equipment. And it will be basically an eight-foot hole for that whole area. And you'll need to make a decision how, what direction you want to go with that retaining wall. So if we could move up a little, we'll go to Arrowdale and want to go, try to go as quickly through this to give you a feel. This is, this is so you see it, you hear from me. And then these would, my, my recommendation would be this for the beginning of questions or detailing or backup. Okay, Arrowdale, DTSC or oversight and perpetuity. There's some, there's something that has to do with design choices and decisions surrounding, there is an oil well on the property, not a water well, it's an oil well. HMC true-up. Okay, what that means is this, some direction, what will happen is the contracts for both HMC and for DLR are based on a percentage of completed costs. So what we mean by true-up is there's, we go through cost analysis. When you get to the end of the project, then you will do, there'll be a, a true-up for HMC. Resolve the scope for furniture order and install. That one is being currently managed by Kathleen Moore. And I think there's, there will be some decisions and direction about that selection and that process. We need to resolve water sewer landscaping issues with the city. Me, I think that can be done in the auspices of what Griselda is able to accomplish in bridging between the design and the city requirements and successfully completing those hookups. Complete the SSMP, which is state seismic mitigation program that we talked about earlier. Resolve exterior fence design. That's one piece that is still in the process of decision making. And that one, some direction will need to be addressed. And then finally, conduct a construction audit and completion. And I go up further, go to the high school. Okay, the next, what we're presenting here are projects that are under construction or the board has already approved. That's what this information is intended for. Okay, for the underground utility modernization, resolve the easements and owner with the city, an ownership with the city public works, which will require legal counsel. We are still, the easements entitlements have been varying levels of assumptions and incompleted information. We have the Somas is the civil engineer and we go through Chicago title and it's taken us a couple of months to get Chicago title to actually give us that information or follow that trail. So that will still need to be resolved. Conduct the construction audit. Okay, on the south side, modernization. So the south side, what we call south side, really includes the, we say south side, but what it means is the, everything but the buildings itself, everything that's outside of the buildings, which would be the Godration lawn and the play fields and the retaining walls components. So that's what we have here. Methane mitigation, design approval. That's a design process that will end up in agreeing and negotiating with DTSC to determine what that level of mitigation is going to be. Exterior fence final design. Complete ADA path of travel. In order for the board to have design immunity on this particular issue, it's accomplished by the fact that we are completing the designs that complete that path of travel. That's why you're doing the completed design for the site work. Okay, resolve board of education, design immunity regarding Conheim. This is a very important piece on this. The intended design as far as DSA is concerned was to demo the Conheim. If you choose not to demo the Conheim and that's a decision, that's important piece of direction. I highly recommend that you achieve, or you obtain legal counsel on that matter regarding your design immunity. Building C, DSA approved, retaining wall two, approved, retaining wall three, that's kind of this information and the Venico. So this has to do with the south side. Can we go up a little bit? I'm going to save most of my communication for the last one. Okay, buildings one and two, complete where we are. Is we need to complete, there's a final closeout, which is called certification. Um, is we need to complete, there's a final closeout which is called certification. That has to do with some final documentations, that's an administrative and, and routine. However, direction and integrate, integration with your M and O department. Is we generally are involved in supporting M and O. With during the warranty period and commissioning period. So it's not just closing it out from the contract standpoint or DSA standpoint, but making sure that the warranty period. And the turnover period in the commissioning period is coordinated with M and O. There'll be a, a deal, can deal our true up. On B one, B two. One thing that was talked about, um, it didn't get on the schedule is scheduling a grand opening for B one, B two. That's a direction or a choice. Okay, now I'm gonna get to B three, B four. Uh, negotiate the final PGMP. Legal counsel to prepare documents, direction and uh, communicate whatever the board's direction is for that one, I recommend. That the final uh, development of the documents as we've gone through this entire project. Um, is gone through legal counsel for final. There's a DLR true up. Initiate an FFME, which would be the furniture fixtures and equipment scope and order and install. Okay, go, but please go up to the next one. Next page. Now I think that's the last page. So this one, upon completion. Activate methane monitoring and construction audit. These are very general uh, issues that are not just necessarily routine, but uh, you'll need to provide decisions and direction. Now, this particular piece has to do with. Understanding some information about. Um, how these projects have been put together. And I understand, um. I, I've heard a lot of things in public and I've heard a lot of things in newspapers about the project costing too much money and taking too long. I, I would hope that someone would have the acumen and the standing to look at the drawings. And look at these projects. And take a minute to understand. Anyone that's in the business professionally, it would understand what's in front of you. An RFI is some, it's, it's for those, I don't mean to be. Assuming you don't know, but RFI is a request for information. In the, in the, when you're building a building, especially a DSA project. An RFI gets written when the work, the subcontractor contractors are going into an area or approaching something that says. This isn't on the drawing. Or this isn't clear on the drawings, how to do this. Or something, there's a gap here in the, in the construction documents, so they write in RFI. Also, within a DSA project, something occurs, it's called a CCD. Okay? That's a construction change document. Within the DSA world, that's the same as when you submitted the drawings to DSA and they went through the DSA process and they proved it. A CCD is important to understand because when you, when it RFI, they're asking a question. And then you try to get the answer, that RFI can turn into what's called a CCD. It's really important to understand about a CCD. Is that you stop back away from that work, stop. And you use, let's say, within the cases of B one, B two. When you take off all the plaster on the existing um, existing concrete. And you find this utterly decayed. And there are areas where the concrete actually falls apart and it's just exposing the rebar. And you look at that and say, well, how do we fix this? Well, the fix has to go from the dirt, right, from all the way down to the dirt. To the footing, to the wall and all the way to the roof. So that means a structural engineer has to then take a drawing. Plot a solution, do the actual calculations. In order to solve that problem. That goes to DSA. And DSA treats it, goes into a bin and the, the plant checkers plan check them, just like a set of drawings. And then information comes back. Typically an RFI, it's just the RFI they ask a question, the information is returned in fifteen days. However. If it has to turn into a DSA, the structural engineer and architists is really to do a drawing to go to DSA. Some of these RFIs were at DSA for six months or were in design for six months. And revisions are made, so you see addenda revisions to, we had three hundred and sixty CCDs. Been doing this. Um, a few years. The most I've ever had on a complicated project of a CCD was two. This is extraordinary projects. What it indicates is that the seismic retrofit is dependent upon. Information that were taken from um, drawings that were. We call them as well from the nineteen twenties. That was the source documents. So you have to destroy or demolish or take off. All the interior back to the, to just the bare concrete or the bare block at the exterior. And then work through how you're gonna solve it based on discovery. So what does all that mean? Well, Elrodale. Is about fifty percent complete. And we're currently at over twelve hundred RFIs. The most I've ever had on a project of these managers, I've done high rises and major projects in terms of cost, but in certain complexity. Maybe five hundred RFIs. So the RFIs mean we can't figure out how to build it. So then DSA says, okay, you have to prove to us your engineering, re-engineer it so we know, so we can approve it. What that means is you have to find a way to get a momentum in production. So it's a production impact. We move down on, on B three, B four. Let's look at B three, B four, which is about fifty percent complete. On B one, B two, seventeen hundred RFIs, two hundred and thirty eight. CCDs. Every CCD has a minimum time delay, time, not delay, but time impact. A CCD will have at least ninety days to a hundred and twenty days. We've had some that have almost nine months. To go through the system, come back, get revised and be able to build and create a momentum. We're talking about mostly the structural. So what we've had in these projects so far is six hundred and seventy four CCDs. Um. We've, none of us have experienced this. Doug Humphrey would tell you he has experienced this. In terms of the complexity of a seismic retrofit in a decayed building and what the concept is. So RFIs, four thousand. RFIs, we're used to a couple hundred, maybe five hundred. Total revisions, these are revisions to those RFIs and revisions to the drawings, four hundred and seventy six actual drawing revisions. Um, addenda revisions. That means the whole, the, the, the DSA says, you have too many CCDs. We want a drawing, revise the drawing. We've had fourteen revised sets of drawings. Between the two campuses. So what does all that mean? Well. One of the things that we planned for, a lot of it we planned for, and a lot of it we identified. And we uh, example would be, and before, uh, before, there's a corner, a south. Let's um, a southwest corner, about twenty five percent of that four space. When we started to dig down and uh, removes some of the material for haz- hazmat. We found that that corner of the building was built on what's called slough. I mean, the building was built. It wasn't, it was said engineered, it's usually compacted, it's u- up to a certain standard, we call that an engineered fill. But a quarter of that whole building which tied into the tower was built on. Material or organic material, it wasn't compacted. And you don't discover that until you pull off and you look at it. Well, the consequence of that one in particular. We had to dig down twenty feet below the bottom of the footing. Sure, cause we can only. That, that's a big wall to shore, that had to be shored. Then we had to shore the footing and the wall all the way to the roof. Because once you uncover the soil, you, you're trying to hold this building together. So we went down twenty feet to find what's called um. Native or, or find a competent soil where we could get enough compassion. So then you put all that back. That happened throughout B three, B four. Um, a hundred times. Where we dug down and found out the footings weren't as deep, where we found contaminated soil. B one, B two wasn't as bad in that regard, for some reason, but B one, B two. Had two hundred and sixty micro piles, I think you all have seen the picture. We had to put the micro piles in to hold the building from, from moving. We didn't have to do that in B three, B four. What we did encounter. Was in, in a um, an areas like in where the auditorium is. And the drawings assume there might be some hazmat which we went in and. We did some testing and we found the hazmat and then we did the destructive work. And we found out that everything under the uh. Where the uh. His teeth go. Look. It was supposed to be concrete piles that hold up the concrete. It was bricks. So all that we had to pull out, we pull all that out and the next thing we discover. Is that the dirt is what we call hot, because we test, right, because everything on the high school. Is on a DTSC site, which means we have to test every bucket of dirt that comes out. Every bucket of dirt that comes out of the building. And goes into a dumpster or goes into a truck has to be determined what level of contaminant and where does it go. So the newest thing that happened this last week is we dig, dig in the corridor. Uh, the corridor that runs down to the. To the um, auditorium. And we've been running on that for, you know, gosh. Um, almost two years, but it's time to take the dirt out and begin to do the work. And so we discovered there's some material that is uh. Is v- very uh, means we have to take it out. And it can't be compacted because it's called liquefaction. It's, it's, it will, it can't be compacted. So we say, well, how deep is this? We go out with the excavator, we try to find how deep is it? The entire corridor. That means we'll be digging down in that corridor. I'm hoping that we can do. A little bit at a time and find out and not have to take out the, all the dirt in that quarter. All the dirt in that quarter is about eight hundred cubic yards. Eight hundred cubic yards. Um. We have to take it out and bring in fill. Right, that all comes out and we bring in fill. We might be able to mix some on site, but I don't think so. So that is what we run into and that's what we try to use all the contingencies for, but there comes a point. Where the conditions and the unknowns. Um, it's, it's just, there comes a point where we can't anticipate. We have on. B one, B two, before we started. Ten thousand, about ten thousand five hundred line items. That my team did and the Pro West team did when the drawings came out of DSA. Ten thousand five hundred liners, we'll recall, that analysis. The drawings. That can never DSA. Was not enough information to be able to bid in what we anticipated that would be RFIs or CCDs. So a lot of them, we anticipated. And we used, um, that was our risk management and our claims management approach. B one, B two is very successful in that. I've heard it said, which I find inaccurate, that Pro West got a bonus for the project. I think that's. Adjorative. I think the issue was both the district was incentivized as well as Pro West incentivized. To do the work of identifying what the risk is. Quantify that and as we go through and mitigate the project. We're able to work through problems that we thought were going to be there either from schedule. Or from actual delays or, or additional work based on the notes. B three, B four is not the same kind of building. And Elrodale is not the same kind of building. So as you go forward and you think about. Um, your program and how you want it delivered or don't want it delivered or the delivery methodology. Um, I wanted to give you at least. A starting point of what you should be thinking about when it's time to give direction on these components. So. Any questions?
Eli would like to start?
Um, sure, uh, I'm still here, but my computer died, so that's why I'm on the camera. Um, would you be able to scroll up? I just had a couple of like clarified questions on some acronyms, a little like. Okay. Oh, there you go. Uh, I was curious what PMK standing for?
Person of the most knowledgeable.
What do you think? That's what I thought it was.
And. Scroll down a bit.
The best information, yeah.
Um, oh, there, um, what is uh, HMC? Was the architects.
That, that's the name of the architect, that's the firms, uh, at the firms in uh, acronym. Like DLR is the architect at the high school, HNC is the architect at Elrodale.
Thank you.
No, CCD, yeah. CCD. Change.
I think that's about it for me. Thank you for the uh, presentation.
Michelle?
Well, it was very, very uh. Complete as to what we are, where we are and where we have to go and so on. Um, one of the things that it seems to me that one of the things that has caused a great deal that you mentioned. Is a lot of the obstacles that you ran into uh, that you evidently didn't anticipate in the construction process. Which has delayed uh, and probably increased the cost of the construction as going forward. Um, and, and also, how would you rate that? In the place where we're at right now, Mr. Blake? How would you rate that where we are right now as to? Um, the, the, the problems that you ran into, the delays and the extra costs that that caused you to incur. Uh, going. In the project.
It would be two, the delays and the um. As I described, all of the CCDs that, that delay process. We were able to find ways in B one, B two because we're able to work on multiple floors. So most of the problem was in the first floor, as you recall, we went through those um, tours. Most of the, all of that structural concrete uh, seismic retrofit was. For B one, B two was in the floor and all those micro piles. And so at B one, B two, we're able to work on the second floor in the roof area. And continue to keep crews working. We're able to establish a momentum. B three, B four, we don't have that option in terms of space to flip through. Um, and the reason why B three, B four, I, I know that, uh, let me, let me make this crystal clear. I've repeatedly said the reasons why I didn't want to do. A um, I would not bring to you a bond update until October. Was in fact to verify what we were seeing that was alarming. The market, we have bids, uh, market prices on uh, building C, three bids. Market prices from subcontractors on. Market prices from subcontractors on site work. We were able to get a successful bid from ARB for the oil wells, for example. I wanted to know that we actually had market prices to confirm that the escalation. Had gone beyond anything any of us had imagined. So that's why I didn't do it in June, I did it, we had pricing completing in July. And when we finally had those prices, as I said repeatedly. When I'm able to confirm something to you that is concrete and verifiable, then I would bring it. On B three, B four, if you look at this last page here, you look at down at the B three, B four. We're halfway through B three, B four. There are. Um, uh, uh, let's go down the bottom. The problem with B three, B four is how many CCDs ended up on both those, both those and really completely complete. Those CCDs, we were able to put in, I'm going to use an acronym of ROM, it's called a rough order of magnitude. When the CCD comes in, we see, oh my gosh, what is this? We put a budget on it. But we know that we're not going to get the approved drawings back from DSA for maybe. Six months or nine months because they're structural. When they come back, then we have the subcontractor's price and now I have a price. The ROMs tended to be much higher. Much, much higher than what the actual prices were when we finally got the completed CCDs. So it's been frustrating for this project. Uh, it isn't that someone is not attending to it. Is that we want to get to you actual bid prices, verified prices, not budgets and not rough order of magnitude. Um, realizing the way this program was, let's say they did a rough order of magnitude, you could say, well, this is open book accounting, Don. At the end of the job, it's cost plus a fee. So let's say the, the rough estimates were, were over or whatever they were, at the end of the day, it's cost plus a fee. So. B three, B four has been the most difficult challenge out of all of the projects that we have attempted. Mostly because of the condition of the building and the solution and the approach to do the seismic retrofit. We are putting steel in and we're putting concrete in to hold the building together. And when we get halfway through and we discover something in the tower, for example. That whole roof had to come off. I know you've seen it, I know Noah reminded me during the rainy seasons that the roof is completely gone. Well, that was not in the drawings, that was not in the design. The interior inside of that whole thing. All of the steel, all the girders, all of the columns had to be completely redesigned. And redone because we found out in the dirt. And we found out in the footings, the concrete footings, the porting of walls were not what was on the drawings. So I would say, uh, Ms. Marcus, that. At Elrodale, we're confident with the schedule and we're confident with the G max. Uh, we're absolutely confident with Elrodale. B one, B two, we were able to deliver it and be able to say, well, we didn't need all this contingency for this risk management. B three, B four, schedule is going to be a challenge. And the final price where we feel, we are meeting with them. Um, uh, Pro West on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. And we think we have all the final prices. So to answer your question, how do we, does it cost more money? Um, we're able to identify the actual cost, we're able to identify that the cost that the district is paying. Is not a cost plus a change order. It's the, the cost that is in the guaranteed maximum price. It's a real challenge to make that work, but schedule, I'm not concerned about. And the cost for Elrodale, I'm not concerned about. Or the cost for the underground, the underground, we believe we have enough contingency in it. To look out for some things because digging in the soil. At Beverly Hills High School means you dig with an excavator, a big pile of dirt, you have to test it. And decide if you can reuse it or keep going. Almost each bucket that, that, that we pull out of the dirt, we have to test and determine if we can put it back. So, um. I don't know if I answered your question, Ms. Marcus.
Well, I, I, you know, I hear so much about the fact that the addition to the. The inflation of twenty percent that has caused so much of this problem. I, I don't think that that's sometimes fair to put it all on that because I also see the obstacle that. The request for information, the CCDs and their, you know, and what you have have also caused. A, a great deal of changes in the uh budgets and in the predicted day, the cost reduced. I have one last question.
Let me clarify for them, Ms. Marcus, we have a misunderstanding. The R F I S and the CCDs doesn't change the cost of the district. The escalation has to do with the market's cost. We had budgets that were developed in two thousand eighteen with an assumption of certain amount of escalation. The escalation from two thousand, two thousand eighteen to October of two thousand twenty one. Was an additional twenty one percent that none of us could have anticipated. And if you're going to bid the work going forward right now. That escalation is going straight up, it's not plateauing, it's going straight up. So I need to tell you and inform you that the market is not supporting our budgets. Because of escalation, not because their scope missed or a schedule or i- i- we didn't anticipate the right time. Or the right amount of, of scope in these projects. It has to do with the escalation for across the board in the marketplace. And I needed to tell you that. Before the right time to tell you, my opinion, is when you're looking at going forward with scopes that are not under contract.
Okay, well, I have one more question. I don't know if it has to do with where we are right now, it's assuming B three and B four are done. Elrodale is done and we still have money and what would be, in your opinion? With what we have left, what are the most important or the most pressing things that we should do with what we have left?
Um, and. We, we've budgeted um the final P G M P for B three, B four. And we've reduced that budget as we've gotten prices as we've gone along. I think that um, the decisions you've made. To complete the design for the high school needed to be done. Not to give the architect work to do, but because it's all connected to your regulatory compliance and your final permitting. Mi- there are many reasons to do it. And I think you've made that decision, I think that, that, that decision will put you in the best position. In terms of DSA and DTSC. I think the decision to do the modernization of the underground, which is taking place right now. The best price you're ever going to get is the price that's right now. Um, in two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four. We're projecting every indication that we have from third party as well as our own bidding process. Is another twenty percent beyond. That, that's, that's what Ms. Johnson was trying to indicate is that. What we presented to you in October is the worst case scenario, if you postpone or you have a gap. And the bidding is done in twenty three, twenty four. We need to tell you that if you do that. Our projections are this is the escalation in that period, it's nothing to do with the current contracts going over budget. Or current contracts going over schedule, that's just not true. And you're not out of money. So I think the decisions you've made so far were good ones, in my opinion. Which is do the underground and finish the design. B three, B four. And Elrodale are in process and I would say. You might want, if you want to take a look at the FFNE and the furniture, the, that, there's some discussions about. What that might be or how that might change. But I think you've made, and I pretty, you've made the decisions that I recommended to you in October, you made those decisions already.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it.
Don, um, and Pam, thank you so much for all your, your information, I do have to leave, but um, I got a lot out of it. Thinking about things that I, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, thank you for the update, Don, the issue that you talked about in regards to the foundation at B four. With the liquefaction stuff, what stage are you in the reparation of that? And when you expect that portion to be corrected and completed?
I don't know, that one could take um, uh, six weeks to four months. N- n- not to dig it out and, and take the dirt out and put the shoring in. But to do the CCD to go to DSA to do the remediation. If it's just putting back in good dirt and compacting it, great, probably six weeks. Um, if there's an, if that, if the soil that we're talking about as we dig down eight feet. And we look and we see below the footing, there's some of this material that's under a footing, whole other program. And that's what we have experienced, not all the time, but many times. When we're taking out the, the soil, the soil that's, that has to come out.
And then I also was looking over the current project estimated schedules. Um, I tried to discuss this, but I was in the middle of, of reading these documents over. But it looks like you have Elrodale um completed.
December twenty three.
December twenty three, I, I couldn't judge the line here because it looked like. No, twenty three.
So final completion is twenty four and substantial completion is twenty three, is that correct, Don?
Substantial completion is twenty three. The FFNE and the move will take place from fourth quarter twenty three to the start of the next. Next school year, which would take you into uh twenty four. But substantial completion. I'm sorry?
So the kids can be in by fall twenty four, if I remember correctly.
Yes, that was always the plan, that's correct, it's not two thousand twenty five, I'm not sure. Maybe I misspoke somewhere, but uh, it was never two thousand twenty five. We moved it back from two thousand twenty five to two thousand twenty three.
And then my other question, just to get the uh, the order of. Construction along with cash flow for the high school is. The utility trenches are getting done now. And the next project has to be the retaining walls, correct?
It's, well, the next project, I, I would recommend, and you can. Work that through would be retaining wall number five in order to complete the VENICO. Sign off from DTSC and the sign off from Calgem.
And is that, can we do that? Um, regardless of the legacy well project, we start that five, retain all five regardless of those wells?
Yes.
Okay, so um, as we move around. The campus, if we start at, at the retaining wall five, then we would be heading. North along the campus, correct, doing retaining walls. And all of those retaining walls have to be completed before building C, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get the order involved, so.
Can I just intersect interject there for a second? So my understanding from you and Pam previously was that we need the drawings back from DLR for the site work in order to do that.
But, no. Let me uh, uh, rehearse, rehearse this again. The way we approached this is we took building C and made it a separate A number and included the pool. Now, we knew all along, in order to build building C, we'd have to dig a hole. But there were reasons um that you and I talked about when I first met you, uh, Mr. Wells. Why the decisions were made to do it that way to give the board options, meaning. The original design was three story parking. The design was changed to one story parking. But whether it was one story parking or three story parking, we had to dig the hole in order to place the building. So from a scheduling standpoint, in order to not have a gap in construction. We put building C separately, which is tied to your eminent domain case, frankly. Um, and then those retaining walls would always have to be done first in order to do building C. Again, we decided to, and we found a way to negotiate with DTSC. To allow us to do those retaining walls in a footprint. In other words, this, if you imagine the retainer comes down and about five feet out in front of that retaining wall. DTSC would allow us to do the digging and the excavation for that specific area. Prior to having a completed permit for the entire site. And that planning was, that was my planning. Um, two years ago. Uh, to put together the sequencing of approval. And that's why we had DSA numbers in, in, in um individual numbers, otherwise generally speaking. This project should have had one A number for the whole site. We actually have twelve. So the purpose of it was to be able to get into DSA, get out of DSA. Begin to do work, negotiate with DTSC to allow us to do that kind of make a cut for the retaining wall.
Um, I just wanted a question.
Go ahead, sorry.
Um, so, so Don, my, my last question is that this document that's up right now. I think it will be helpful for the board to potentially have estimated. Dates so we can get these things on the agenda and we can make decisions. I, I, it's a rough, it's a rough, you know, because there's a lot to unpack here and I think that it would be great, um, you know, Dr. Brede. Somehow we organized all of these thoughts and kind of put them in an order of, because, just because, you know, there's, there's stuff that's, that's litigation based, stuff that's. Not, and, and we just, we need to sift through it and get this out, figure this out, so I just.
Make a recommendation, Noah. It, it doesn't quite go that streamlined. I think that some of these decisions can be done without um. Uh, th- th- this is board direction and this is necessarily something, these are the things that I'm bringing to you. Normally I bring to you, here's the G max or here's the contractor, here's the subcontractor and you approve or you process that. These are things generally outside of the contracting component that have to do with direction that otherwise my team would do. But if you're going to make, you have decisions to make about. Who's going to do it, whether you want this program that's been delivered? And it sounds like there's some question to me about whether there's confidence in this program or in confidence in um. In how any of this has been put together and that it's taken too long and it costs too much. Okay, I mean, that's interesting, but um. If, if that's the case, then make the decisions that you need to make. Uh, to change that or to do something different. I wanted you to have in front of you though, as you make those decisions. Here are the directions you should think about, so what I would recommend, if you don't mind, Noah, would be. Hey, give us some more background online on, 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 on these topics. I think you guys need background, not so much board decisions and board meetings, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So the VENICO retaining wall is retaining wall five, is that correct?
That's correct.
And did you say that you have market prices for the site work?
Uh, when I say market prices, what I mean is. That uh, during the pre-construction services activities with Pro West, they don't have a contract for any of this work. If you will, but they do have a pre-construction services agreement of which during that process. We went through pricing bid packages and put the packages together and got subcontractor or market prices. It's, 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 uh, it's a budget, what I'm saying is. I'm not auctioning and neither is Pro West. It's our best information, the best level that I'm comfortable with, that I can confirm that these prices are the right prices in the market. Based on the, on the drawings and the documents that we have.
Okay, um, well, I don't have any more questions for today, but I really appreciate your presentation and I want to thank Cam for being here as well. I'm sorry that we ran so late, um, we really were hoping that we could uh, be out of here by six o'clock. Um, we really were hoping that we could, uh, be out of here by six o'clock at the latest, so.
I'm done on for the for planning for the following school year that with the with the bridge. Um, is that something that will stay up through the summer and into next year? And through the final construction of B three before, or is that something that that you believe will come down this summer?
Um, I plan to kind of talk about that at our next Thursday meeting, Dr. Brecky. Because we we have priced it out and, um, we want it and we're looking at. Uh, pr- probably in the. Uh, putting that in the final P G M B for B three, B four. And. We would like to take it down during the summer. That would be definitely a tight thing to do during the summer. Um. That would be our desire, but I also, we've, as we've talked about more than once in our Thursday meetings, which is great. Is there maybe some educational priorities that you may want or Mark Mead would want on the site? I'm assuming that's still a question.
Yeah, so we're we're just in a lot of those discussions, so I can, um. Uh, continue that discussion with you next Thursday.
All right.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other questions?
No, I would just say there's a hefty presentation attached that we didn't go over tonight. It was attached to the agenda. I think it'll remain attached. People should get a chance to look for it. You know, we didn't get to go through it tonight.
That's what I was gonna say.
Maybe, I don't know. Can if you guys care if it comes back on. And another.
Why don't we discuss when we're gonna schedule?
Yeah, that's fine.
We definitely should have.
I just meant the, that just a quick update could come through regular work. Michael's update or something, just just.
I think we should have ongoing updates, absolutely. I don't, I that I was expecting something that dealt more with the packet that we got. In the presentation in terms of the, you know, where the there are and so on. I just. Appreciated that also.
Okay.
Well, we could discuss.
All right. Well, thank you very much for.
Lot of, lot of.
Providing that.
I understand what I'm saying.
And, um, we'll. Coordinate through Michael.
That would be helpful in your decision making, uh, in the next, uh, I would imagine in the next six weeks, that, um. It can help you frame some of those decisions, um. Regarding the project base. Pam would have some, uh, similar things to share with you regarding the program side, the part that she does that deals with. Uh, how the program and the business side works and some decisions and direction you may want to keep in mind.
I really appreciate it. It's really helpful. Um, so we'll schedule when we want to try and schedule our next, um. Study session, I would say. I would suggest we do another study session down the road. Um. But for tonight, I just want to thank you. It's Friday night and I appreciate you being here till seven o'clock, so. Uh, on that note, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting and, uh, say goodnight to everybody.
See you Tuesday.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Oh, it's seven, six fifty five, yeah.
Thank you.